The following program is brought to you by the League of Women Voters, Oakland area. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan organization established to encourage citizen participation in government. It never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. The statements and opinions of the candidates are presented in the interest of public service and in no way are to be construed as endorsement thereof by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters takes no responsibility for any of the views or facts stated by the candidates.
Good evening and welcome to this forum for the city of Kegel Harbor. Today is October 20th, 2014. This forum is featuring the three candidates who have filed for city council for the November 4, 2014 election. Vote for two for a three-year term. Sponsor of this forum is the League of Women Voters Oakland area. I am Jerry Burton, a member of the League of Women Voters. I am not a resident of this city. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, national, nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate or political party, we are directly involved in shaping the issues that keeps our community strong. As a League member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this that has great impact on state, local, and even national issues. If you're interested in learning how you can make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some of the League's information available here tonight or visit our website, l w v o a dot org. The League of Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or party. Views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and the sponsors take no responsibility. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. We ask the audience remain silent during the forum. Please turn off all cell phones. We ask the candidates answer the questions with their views only and not interrupt another candidate. The candidates will be answering questions from the audience and screen for duplication and appropriateness by John McGary, a League member. If you need to write a question, raise your hand and we'll get you a pencil and paper. Please turn your questions into the page and the format as follows. All candidates will be given a two-minute opening statement in alphabetical order. Closing statements will be one minute in reverse order. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question in rotation unless time is extended by the moderator. All candidates will be allowed equal time to answer all questions. Our timer is Carol Elder. She will indicate when there's 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and when to stop. The candidates are Robert Kalman, Sidney Rubin, and Philip A. Tros. On the ballot, there are no proposals in this community. Will you get our opening statements with Mr. Kalman?
Kalman.
Kalman, okay.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry. And thank you to League of Women Voters for coordinating this important forum. Let me be blunt. I'm asking you to reelect me to the Kegel Harbor City Council. I've proven more than capable. When Kegel Harbor faced financial challenges during the Great Recession, I took it as an opportunity to focus our attention on fiscal stability and sustainability. I used some of the same sound business practices that I used to run my successful company along with some common sense, and it's helping our city. We developed a long-term financial plan. It helps us strategize properly for the future, and I'll continue to apply the same advanced skills so we can always provide important services. The results of our actions have been pretty phenomenal. Just last week, we were recognized and awarded by the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments for the work we've done over the past number of years. You can learn more about me and read about our successes in Kegel Harbor at my website. It's kalmanforkegelharbor.com, which I'll remind you of. In short, while other cities across Michigan were struggling with no tax increases at all for our residents, we, with the past several years, revitalized, we repaved numerous local roads, we refinanced our city hall, cut payments, and increased our cash flow. We've returned money to our fund balance, our savings, each of the past seven years. We've restored Rose Center Park for a fraction of what was originally quoted to us, created a rental ordinance to help protect our home values, received praise from our auditors, from S&amp;P for our financial stability, set up shared services, increased resident turnout for a lot of community events. We've reorganized. We've been awarded many times over the years, and we've invested in certain areas when other studies and municipalities across the region have cut back. I hope you share your ideas with me. Go to the website, kalmanforkegelharbor.com. You have a chance to contact me.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin.
Thank you very much. If you're like me, you want to know more about your candidate, their background, and also about the understanding that they have as far as the issues facing Kegel Harbor. During this broadcast, you'll have an opportunity to hear and decide which candidate has a vision and which candidate has an ability to perform. Kegel Harbor is a big business. It's a real big business that provides affordable services for everybody in the community. My resume contains an exceptional amount of experience in the private, public, and the government sectors. I founded a toy specialty company as well as another company that operated nationwide in malls throughout the country. I founded a toy specialty company called Circus World Toy Stores. You may have heard of it, otherwise known as KB Toys. My government appointments were that of State Waterways Commissioner, a member of the Michigan Municipal League's Finance Committee, a member of the Oakland County Economic Development Committee, and one that I'm most proud of is chairperson of Business Operations and the Finance for the Oakland County Committee Mental Health Authority. By the way, the authority provides services and supports to over 22,000 Oakland County residents with serious developmental disabilities and adults with serious mental issues as well as children with emotional disturbances. I've been entrusted to oversee an annual budget of over $300 billion annually. I've been known to implement a proactive-style approach to sound government, and I'm proud of the operations that we all have accomplished. I was elected to the city council in 2005. I was reelected again in 2008, 2011. I served three terms as the city's mayor and two terms as mayor pro tem. My wife and I have four children, 13 grandchildren, and all the grandchildren want equal treatment. I love to tell the success story of Kegel Harbor everywhere I go.
Thank you, Mr. Tros.
Good evening, and thank you so much for inviting me tonight, League of Women Voters, people in the audience and virtual audience on TV. I'm Philip Tros. I'm very long, come from a long family of people who lived in Kegel. My grandfather, Charles Chatfield, has seen some very old pictures of my uncle rowing them up the canal as they were fishing early 1900s. This is an old, old community. 1900 is when it started. It's 114 years old. My business is Autoway Tros Company. 69 years now in this community, same family ownership, successful. Yes, I know how to run a business. Been doing it for a long time. It's a unique skill for some. We find it something that we've been doing all our lives. There's other families like mine in the Kegel community, M&amp;M Cleaners and other old family. So when I look back, I see an old history of people that came to this community when Joseph Sawyer started it with the idea of a resort community. It turned into a residential community and was provided services by businesses. And as it's grown, the one thing that's always been consistent is inter- entrepreneurship, free enterprise, and the individual, whether it be a person that lives here, a person that runs their business here, or does both. I come to you asking for an opportunity to be on the council tonight, to bring those skills and bring that very personal love and commitment to Kegel and its people. It's a voice for the people that I come to you with and offer, and if you give me a few minutes of your time and vote, I'll give you three years of heavy commitment to the individual and their needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll start the questions, and the first question will be with Mr. Kalman. What are your ideas for the development of the parcel of the corner of Orchard Lake Road and Cass Lake Road currently city-owned?
Well, the corner property is up for sale, as people know, and my idea, what I would like to see happen is working with Oakland County. We're going to be working with the One Stop Oakland County Program, which is a program that helps communities throughout cities, villages, townships throughout Oakland County market their services, the community, to outside developers. If we follow along with what One Stop Oakland County is putting forward in their training programs, which we're going to be participating in, not just city council members, but we're going to have planners and city staff, and we follow along with the process that's been lined out and developed by professional planners and city engineers and so on, it'll be able, Oakland County will be able to help us represent Kegel Harbor and bring developers to the table and bring a reputable company, something that we can all be proud of, something that will help develop Kegel Harbor for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin.
Well, I certainly agree with what Mr. Kalman has just said, but in addition to that, we've had, everybody knows that we own the property. It was a mistake, but we've got to turn the mistake into a good success story. My idea is to take that piece of property, combine it with adjoining property, and build a downtown community for Kegel Harbor, a walkable community, a community that people can drive a bike to, and build that corner into a center that attracts business that will also contribute tax money to the city. I think we can do it, and I'm very proactive in trying to find the right buyer. We've turned down quite a few offers. They just didn't make sense for Kegel Harbor. So hopefully, we'll have someone that will step forward with a vision and a passion and present a proposal to our city.
Thank you, Mr. Tros.
Yes, obviously, this was a bad situation that was inherited by the present council. Getting development in Kegel has never been hard. People have been coming here for 114 years and building businesses and building families. Gino Santilla's only been here maybe 40 or 50 years, eh, Gino? Santilla Hall, Yaudoo's over at Center Point, that's another family, a lot of us. I expect that this is, as Kegel is very attractive for us to be in business in, we will see another family, a private entity, come in here and hopefully join more property because that space is so limited, and it will be developed. But it's always been the private enterprise and inter- entrepreneurship, the free enterprise system that we believe in in this country. I'm sure that will occur. Time is just waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Rubin. City of Kegel Harbor has repaved and replaced several streets during the past five years. What do you ensure that road construction projects will be distributed fairly to all residents and completed?
That's a great question. More important, what are we going to do about the drainage as well as the roads? My plan is to combine both. We first got to do the roads. At first, we had a $9 million village that was proposed to our residents, and I'm so happy that everyone turned it down eight years ago when I first came on council. Today, we've completed 67% of our roads. We've got more that we're going to do, and I'll tell you how we're going to do that shortly. But more importantly, we've only spent $750,000, far cry from $9 million, to do our roads. And as far as how we're going to do it, we're going to finance off of our current road contractor to do more roads next year and get more people to enhance the value of their homes.
Thank you, Mr. Tros.
Roads and drainage, obviously, are a significant problem, Kegel. We're far behind the other communities in replacing them. It's certainly part of the taxes that we pay annually. We all pay taxes that should support the replacement of those roads. Obviously, an ongoing plan, as economics allow, should be focused on the drainage and those roads as well as the parking problems in Kegel Harbor because it ties right into each other. It's going to take a lot of work. It's going to take some money. It's going to take a lot of commitment from the community. I'm sure a lot of people have ideas. I'm looking for people, if I'm in office, to come to me and offer some of those ideas of how they feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalman.
Thank you. As Sid mentioned, we've repaved the majority of our roads so far, and there's going to be more that are going to be done. I've taken an active interest in how we're going to go about solving some of our infrastructure challenges. As a rep for SEMCOG, if maybe you don't know, but SEMCOG deals with the roads for the state of Michigan, for the southeast corner of Michigan, and I've been to discussions and listened as to how you finance road projects. Local roads, however, a lot of it's done with Act 51 money, which I won't bore you with some of the details, but some of it comes from the state, and we've used that to repave some of our local roads. We've done it, which is incredible, no tax increases to anybody that lives here. It's mind-boggling when I tell this to members of communities, council people from other communities that I interact with. We're going to explore ways to finance it without raising taxes. We're going to explore ways with, I've very talked to Oakland County Road Commission and their project financing people as to how to go about financing roads, and so, yeah, it's exciting. We're going to actually see some big improvements in our community.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Tros. And I want to read two questions. They're very similar, so that way we won't skip one. What is the proposed plan to attract business to invest in Kegel Harbor? And with the Magnolia project going on, how do you propose to keep this project of new business continuing?
Well, this has always gone on. We've got 114 years of businesses continuing. I mean, I can go back to the Troses, the Chatfields, the M&amp;Ms, the Wallings of the Kegel Harbor, one and two. A lot of those are gone. There's a few of us left, but there's always been new businesses coming to Kegel. They attract them to our location, the lakes. Centrally among other communities, a tremendous traffic load, which is great for businesses. There's no problem finding people that want to make a living and that will come and make investment in Kegel, as we can well see. I mentioned the Yaudoo's lately with Center Point, the Magnolia, another one. This is going to consistently move ahead. The vacant property is limited. I mean, the Tros group will be developing in the near future, I'm sure. So I don't think this is a challenge other than to keep track and try to keep orderly control and rules and follow the ordinances so it's equal for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalman.
Hi. Thank you for asking. I'm in favor of planned growth, but growth that won't take away from the city's general fund. How are we going to do that? We're going to do, but we're going to think through things. We're going to analyze them, and what I've mentioned before in my first question, working with Oakland County and their economic planners is going to be extremely beneficial to our community as we go and build up our downtown. Magnolia is going to spur development. We've been getting phone calls already from other developers and other businesses that are interested in coming to Kegel Harbor. Magnolia is going to change the landscape of our community. It's a phenomenal, a very innovative program, and when people see the picture sitting in our lobby and they walk in and see that, they're going to want to come, especially as they see the construction coming. Positive energy brings more positive energy, and I think you're going to see some really positive growth in Kegel as a result of everybody on the council that's been working together and working with the Planning Commission and everybody that works in the city. It's exciting to be here in Kegel at this time. It's better to see investments as opposed to, you know, eight years ago when there were budget cuts across the board, across the state.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin.
Well, Kegel Harbor is going through a real nice resurgence of development. We've got a lot of interest, of people wanting to invest in Kegel Harbor, and that's what it takes because that brings tax dollars. The Magnolia is a great project for the city of Kegel Harbor. It's a wonderful catch. Can you imagine the tax revenue, the fees that that building will provide for our residents or our community? Now, it's built in a tax increment district, so a lot of the money will go right into that district fund. We can only use that money for development in the Tifa district. The Tifa district is way too large for Kegel Harbor. However it was designed years ago, it doesn't work today, but we can use that revenue to build Kegel Harbor because so much of the vacant land in Kegel Harbor is in the Tifa district. So I'm very proud of that. We did that in 37 days from the time they brought their plans in to the city.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Kalman. What type of community service or involvement in the city issues have you had, and what type of new programs would you like to see?
Community involvement? I've been very involved in the community, from going to every single, you know, the Planning Commission meetings, the zoning boards. I'm involved with Automation Alley, which is a technology consortium in southeast Michigan. Very involved in discussing with other business people about ways to bring business to Kegel Harbor. I think that there's tremendous, I don't like to brag about things that I do. Behind the scenes, I'm pretty active with a lot of different associations. SEMCOG, I've mentioned before. SEMCOG is a great way for me to network with community leaders, not just the state, the city, but even at federal level. In networking, we share ideas, and I learn from different community members as well. People in the community typically bring really good information to me, and I'm happy to work with them and further develop Kegel Harbor that way.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin.
Well, we have a large to-do list in Kegel Harbor. It's quite a large to-do list, and that didn't come by just sitting around having a cup of coffee. It came from some hard work. Number one is the roads and the drainage. That's the biggest project that I feel we've got to keep going with. And developing the Orchard Lake corridor to develop, to find businesses to invest. Another project is to identify ways to assist business people to move into Kegel Harbor and take the tax burden off the homeowners. Creating a real livable community, a walkable community, is important as well. And one of the next projects I'd like to see is create a youth council, giving the kids of our city an opportunity and the tools that they need to become civically involved in their community and understand how to run a municipal body, how important it is to the success of this community.
Thank you, Mr. Tros.
I haven't had the luxury of being on the council before, so there's many things that I have not been exposed to, and I'll stand back to these two gentlemen who have that experience. But I have been on the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Commission, and the zoning, construction appeals. My background is in construction. I'm very knowledgeable about codes, what it takes to run a city, how these buildings should be built. We're having a terrible time. The planning commission's plans have not been followed. I have a real problem with that. We have homes going up that don't meet our requirements. One of the things I bring to the city of Kegel Harbor is those building skills. I don't have to know everything. We have five people on this board all to work together, but I have a contribution in that area that's far beyond the experience of the other four people combined. So that's how I can come, bring a benefit to the Kegel, city of Kegel. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Rubin. What are your thoughts related to residential and multifamily housing? What improvements, if any, would you suggest?
Well, one of the, since we are growing so rapidly, building permits are way up over the last four years. So one of the things that we are kicking around is a one-stop-shopping philosophy. People want to invest in Kegel Harbor. They don't have to go through red tape. They come in here, they meet with two or three of the people who can walk their plans through the Planning Commission from start to end so that when they get ready to build, there's no red tape, they understand what is required of them, and I think that alone will attract a lot more people to invest in Kegel Harbor.
Thank you, Mr. Tros.
Well, that's an area of expertise that I can contribute significantly to. I put a tremendous emphasis on the residential part of the community. We're a relatively high-density population in our community. That makes an awful lot of interaction among people. The codes and rules that we follow must be followed to ensure that everybody has a good quality of life. In fact, I think everything is about the residential community. The commercial development has come on its own. We couldn't restrict it if we wanted to, and we certainly don't. I also think with all this development, we really have an opportunity to maybe reduce taxes, which makes a lot of sense. So, pretty straightforward answer, I hope. Let's build Kegel. Let's people come in and build.
Thank you, Mr. Kalman.
I'm absolutely in favor of planned growth, and when a builder comes to Kegel Harbor or developer comes, I don't want any surprises for them. I want it to be a very, a seamless process. They can come into the front desk, get the information they need to do things properly, and go through the process to get the approvals and see a great growth in the single and multifamily homes for families that want to raise their children here and go to Roosevelt Elementary School so we can continue to see the success of a local elementary school, which is so important to so many people. We raise the tax base, and we can contribute to the general fund, which then allows us to have services, the services that everybody wants and deserves. We're going to continue plowing the streets when we have these big snowfalls. We want to be able to have police officers patrol the streets, and we just want to see the positive things continue by developing our community that it's going to allow us the money so we can actually also lower our unfunded liabilities because we do have a pretty large unfunded liability, which a lot of people haven't talked about. I know a lot about finances. I seem to focus back on that most of what I do, but thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Tros. City, like all cities in Michigan, has an unfunded liability to its current and retired employees. It also has accumulated sick day and time-off obligations. What solutions would you propose to solve those problems?
Kegel Harbor isn't the biggest business in the world. In fact, an awful lot of small businesses are just as large, economically have many more transactions. There's no simple solutions to debt. When it's what debt has been built up, it's a nightmare. We see it at our national level. We see it right down to Kegel Harbor. Funds are being restricted by the state. There's no question the state's approach is that the community starts sharing services. That would be one big one. We have a number of communities that if we join services, we could have a lot of money saved. Obviously, fiscal responsibility is, don't spend what you don't have. Be conservative. Limit what you try to reach out for. Don't sink the ship because you're trying to do too much. Just good plain old economics. Thank you.
Mr. Kalman.
Unfunded liability, it's funny, I just mentioned this in the last response I gave you. It's out there. We've been providing what Merz has called a very rich retirement policy for our former employees. Our employees have worked hard. They deserve to be taken care of in their retirement. So now, we have this unfunded liability. How do we handle it? We've talked about development of our community, bringing businesses to town, raising our tax base. That's going to allow us to provide, of course, the essential services that we want, the police, the fire, the, continue to take care of our roads, but we also have to make sure that we knock down that unfunded liability because as we have this unfunded liability, more and more of the dollars that we pay in taxes goes towards paying the retirement association that we're a part of. It's important that we knock this down, and by doing some of the things we've talked about with business development, and I'm also in favor of some shared services, the limited scope, knowing that we still have to maintain certain services of our own, the core competencies. There you go.
Mr. Rubin.
Well, we do have a rich retirement program, but we had nothing to do with it. It was started a long time ago, way before I even thought about moving to Kegel Harbor. So we inherited that program, but we're going to do something about it. And meanwhile, the vacation time, we've dealt with that. Earn it, lose it, use it, or lose it. We put a policy in. It's working. So we're cutting that exposure down. In addition to that, there are solutions for debt. That particular debt is not going to be a critical issue for Kegel Harbor because, number one, it's not costing us any interest, but we're nitpicking away at it a little piece every single year. So eventually, we're going to be out of the hole on that problem. There are solutions to being in debt. We have proved to the whole state that we know how to get out of debt. We know how to defuse bond money. We know how to refinance, and we know how to lease buildings, sell buildings and lease it back.
Thank you. Next question, we will start with Mr. Kalman. Sylvan Lake is asking the cities of Orchard Lake and Kegel to consider revisiting the 10-year-old tri-city fire agreement. Are you in favor of maintaining the agreement as written, or what other alternative would you have?
Right. I went to the meeting in Sylvan Lake when the tri-city fire board got together with representatives from Kegel, Sylvan, and Orchard Lake. First off, we have a really strong relationship with West Bloomfield Fire Department, and I enjoy having that relationship. The way it was written years ago, it's divided one-third, one-third, one-third between each of the three communities. It was the easiest thing to do at the time when it was formed, and by the way, this relationship allowed us to have 24-hour emergency medical response, something that we didn't have before. Quite frankly, there's not enough information out there right now presented by the board to make a decision. We need to revisit all the financial aspects of it, and we need to look at what's out there. Sylvan Lake would like us in Kegel Harbor and Orchard Lake to pick up a larger tab because we have a little bit more, we have a larger population base, we have more calls. It's worked out very, very well. It causes problems when you start nitpicking at 1% or 2%.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin.
Well, it's a subject that I know quite a bit about. For the last four years, I've been sitting on the been sitting on the fire board as a commissioner representing Kegel Harbor. And this is a contract that was made 10 years ago. 10 years ago, it was decided that every community will pick up one-third of the tab, Kegel, Orchard Lake, Sylvan. It was a good deal. It was a great deal for Kegel Harbor. 10 years later, Sylvan Lake decides that it's unfair, that we should be picking up part of the tab of that. So far, I'm not impressed with any proposal that they gave us that would cause our taxpayers to pick up an added burden. I'm more interested in combining the 911 calls, the dispatch, thank you, the dispatch, with the fire contract. That would bring our prices down even more. But I'm not interested in bailing out people who made a deal 10 years ago without getting something for it.
Thank you. Mr. Tros.
Sounds like tough love, doesn't it? Sylvan didn't get the deal that they like and they want to change things. So one viewpoint, I say, let's stick to our contract. We are getting a good deal. Maybe it's unfair. If the contract is resolved at some point, that can change. In fact, we look with development and the new development, probably even more police and particularly EMS runs, and nobody's going to be able to replace readily what West Bloomfield offers us in sophistication and infrastructure to provide these services, which are very important to everybody. We don't have fires. I can't remember the last time we had a fire, but we sure have EMS runs. They come by my office every day. You can hear my dog howling. I'm all for keeping West Bloomfield services. I think Sid's got a good point. I've already mentioned that we need to share services. Some I don't want to share with the cities, but some absolutely are prudent. Thank you.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Rubin. And the council may not have much say on this, but we'd like their opinion. There have been much speculation about closing the Roosevelt School. What are your thoughts about the school closing? And if it does close, how will this affect Kegel?
Well, it will affect Kegel, and that's why for the last four years, I've been very vocal about keeping that school open. That school's 85 years old. That's, 95, I'm sorry. That school is more important than some of the other fixtures that we have, and I love the Dairy Queen, but I also love the Roosevelt School. Now, here's what's happening at the Roosevelt School, and I think you all should know about this. They're working hard to keep that school open, the West Bloomfield School Board. Their plans are too lengthy to discuss right now, but if anybody wants to call me, I'll give them my views on it. But they're coming up with a STEM program. STEM program is science, technology, engineering, and math. It's a special program to bridge the gap between the first to the eighth-grade students. That's going to be enormous for Kegel Harbor, for the school. That will keep the doors open. Where else can a city like Kegel Harbor get a playground so valuable and attract so many people to Kegel Harbor at no cost to our residents?
Thank you. Mr. Tros.
Well, I'm pretty sure we don't have a lot of control over the school board, but we sure as heck would like to keep our school for many reasons. And I understand that we have a young lady running for the school board from Kegel Harbor, which I thoroughly applaud. It's been a long time. We need representation. With that representation, we have more influence than any council member is ever going to be able to offer, and I'm confident that that school can live here for years. My sister, who's 77, graduated from that school. We need it.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman.
And we want Roosevelt to remain open. Everybody's going to agree on that one. It helps having a local school for our tax base. Families moving into the community want to have a school to send kids to walk to school. It's more than just a school. It's part of our community. I went to a number of meetings when they had a consultant come in to evaluate the school closures, and I listened actively and attentively. I went to school board meetings and I talked in front of the board on TV, pleading with them, pleading our case to keep Roosevelt open because it's such an important part of our community. More importantly, as a city council person, I help represent our city, and we do have a role in the fact that I lobbied school board members one-on-one, by phone, in person, and I formed good relations with them. And expressing to them, I reasoned with them as to why it was so important, and I think they agree with us. It's important to our community. It's the only school in Kegel Harbor. It's got a long, rich history and we're going to, I like what I hear from Sid. Something's going on, which is going to keep it here. I think the message is getting out soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Tros. How would you improve the way residents and the city engage in local government and have better transparency?
I think the transparency has stunk so far. We have some very interesting Facebook pages and webpages. Rob has one. I have PhilForCityCouncil.com that has my opinions and will have further opinions of what should happen in the city, if you'd like to go to it. The Facebook is questions and answers, Kegel Harbor Questions and Answers. You'd be welcome to look at that. It's got a lot of input from a lot of people. There's hundreds of people belonging to these pages now. I think they're a lot freer and less biased than we might get from a city. There are some limitations, maybe the city has, in even putting anything on their webpages. So, you know, transparency is extremely important at every level. No one should have to constantly FOIA all sorts of information to know what's really going on in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman.
There are so many ways you can learn about what's going on in Kegel Harbor. Let me tell you, for transparency, nothing is voted on. No policy decisions are made without the public being allowed to comment and ask questions at a city council meeting. Council meetings are on cable TV. You can watch them. They're streamed live on CivicCenterTV.com. You can watch it there, and you can watch it the next day if you wanted to. Documentation about all the topics are in a book at the back of the council chambers during every single meeting. The dollars coming into our city, the dollars going out from our city, how we spend it. We have a city website with lots of information. We have a mailed newsletter that goes out. It's at the printer right now and you're going to get it later this week. Munetrix, a transparency tool we pay for, provides a citizen's guide and a dashboard for everybody in Kegel Harbor. We had to provide the state of Michigan with a ton of information about shared revenue. And, you know, we went beyond what the state required. There's a link on our website. I push for Munetrix. It's a transparency tool that lays out everything for you to see, very clear, very informative. All council members have emailed, cell phone numbers were approachable. Let me tell you, Kegel Harbor is far more transparent today than I've ever seen. So that's my point.
Mr. Rubin.
Well, Rob, my colleague, Rob Kalman, takes the lead on this, because I certainly support every single thing he said, but more important, we just got an award for being transparent by SEMCOG, the highest award you could get for a city. SEMCOG is an organization that issues report card on communities. We just got the highest award last week. You talk about transparency, all you have to do is come to a meeting. And if you can't come to a meeting, all you have to do is go on our website. If you can't, if you don't have a computer, make a phone call. Any one of our council members are here to answer any question about transparency. As far as FOIA, that's a habit. You don't have to spend money to FOIA anything. All you have to do is come in and ask a question and get the real answer. So, and as far as the Facebook pages, I don't do Facebook, but I can tell you, I'm interested in positive things. I'm not interested in kicking around nonsense.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Coleman. Do you feel the various commissions are empowered enough, or should the city council be the starting point for the ideas?
Well, the starting of the ideas, let's go back up a little bit. The way it works is, an idea might be germinating in the planning commission, and some of the planning commission members are here. They sit and they discuss, and they come up and they formulate ideas, and then they bring those ideas to the city council to vote on. We're going to do something pretty innovative next month. We had a discussion at our last city council meeting with several council, planning commission members in attendance, talking about code enforcement and talking about building. And what we're going to do is have a joint meeting next month, or the month after, it's within 60 days, I believe, planning commission and the city council together with our planning administrator, our planning reviewer, with some engineers, with the city com manager. And this is, it's innovative. It's a way to actually let ideas flow, and rather than going back and forth and letting things drag out forever and ever, we're going to have in one room a bunch of people, so we can actually move forward with positive planning. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Mr. Rubin.
Well, here's another example of transparency. The planning commission had a focus, had conducted a residential study of what do the people want in Kegel Harbor. It was a wonderful report. I think Gino Santia, along with the planning commission, did a fabulous job. So we got input from the community. That's where ideas start from. What do they want? It's their money. How do they want us to spend it? So as a result, we're going to have focus groups developing very shortly, starting in the first part of the year. That's where you get ideas. You get ideas from people who want to invest with you. And if they think you're a workable partner and a legitimate partner, they're going to come with their ideas and together, we're going to develop them. The council only approves plans. They don't implement. The implementation is done by others on the planning board, the code enforcement people, and others that work for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Tros.
I think that the process should be multidirectional. We have department heads, we have council, we have the public, we have professional services. Talking is probably the key item to understanding and coming to agreement, with all the people interacting, with groups that are developed to help them interact, and predominantly the residents in the city, but certainly the businesses. Many of the business people don't live here. They don't get a vote, but they sure as heck got a tremendous investment emotionally and financially and helped this city operate. So it's a long affair to come up with the right answers, but right now, our building department is almost non-functional. Our planning is not being followed. It needs some real restructuring.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Rubin, and I'm going to give you a minute and a half, because this is a finance question. With the governor's revenue sharing, all cities are facing fiscal challenges. How would you address balancing the budget and consider various alternatives and trade-offs to keep the budget balanced and provide the services?
Well, there's a simple answer. We've done it. That's what we do, and that's what we've done. For the past eight years, we have returned money to our general fund every single year. You talk about balancing a budget. The Kegel Harbor budget of $2 million a year is probably one of the more difficult budgets that I have to monitor in my private life. I'm not talking about my private funds. But what we've done is we have refinanced. That made us money. That saved us money. We refinanced, God, I think it was like $980,000 for $840,000. We saved the city $5,700 a month for 29 years in cash flow. That's called managing your budget. As far as the state, they got their own problems. We can't depend on them. But what we can depend is how we manage our own monies. We've done a darn good job at it, and I think we're known for it. We've explored every single opportunity to make sure that we operated within our means, we gave affordable services, and we don't believe in raising taxes. That's how I would solve the problem.
Thank you. Mr. Tros.
Refinancing long-term loans is an absolute practical strategy to reducing our daily operating costs, and each year, we pay back those dollars with dollars that are more easily obtained, both because we have a greater tax base, because of inflation, we actually get those dollars and pay for them cheaper than what we bought. So it's been a damn good strategy. Excuse the French. It's certainly a standard, good business strategy, and I approve it totally. With additional investment in the community, we should have a greater tax base. Yeah, we should be able to reduce taxes and still have the great services that we would like to expect. Hopefully, they can be retained. Obviously, sharing services from other communities is going to be enormous dollar savings and still improve our community services. So, is it a tough question? It's got a lot of future out there. Who knows what's going to happen, but certainly the path that's been taken so far is prudent and good business. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman.
I'm glad that I've heard that it's been prudent and good business, and we've done a good job. It's a smart question. The EVEP, the Economic Vitality Incentive Program, was the state shared revenue program that Governor Snyder's administration put into play a few years ago. I attended various seminars that SEMCOG had. I learned about it. I made sure we followed all the procedures. So we would qualify for all the state shared revenue. It's something you probably heard about. There's been cuts from the state level from shared revenue to each city, which made it hard to continue funding certain services. The efficiencies we've looked for have helped us dramatically. The refinancing of the city hall, as I've heard, has saved us a tremendous amount of cash flow every month, as we leased this building from Oakland County for the next, I think, 24 years. The TIFA bond that was refinanced, the TIFA bond was, we're coming up, projecting a couple years from now, a little bit short, so we refinanced, piggybacking off of the Oakland County AAA bond, and we're able to keep the cash flow manageable, so we're able to maintain the TIFA district. To be more efficient, I mean, I've talked about this long-term finance plan we put together a number of years ago. I've monitored over the past seven years all of our finances. Remember, I pay taxes here and I live here. I don't want to waste my own money. So we look from here, how to be more efficient. We've streamlined what we've done in the office. You've heard about several of our employees doing two jobs, sometimes three jobs. But, you know, and we, council has helped tremendously by offering our guidance.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Tros. How do you feel your personal background on non-public services accomplishments can serve you as a council member of the city?
As an owner of a substantial company, we wear a lot of hats. We manage people, we train them. If we're going to be successful, you better keep training them. I'm a firm believer in that. I think that there's a lot of resources to help train the people that work at the city, although frankly, their tasks are fairly obviously consistent. Clerical, we have a great clerical. I go into every community in the area as a contractor, and the girls here are outstanding. DPW does as well as you could possibly ask with its resources. Building is part-time. That doesn't work. Police Department, I'm not going to address tonight. You can look at my webpage. We'll talk a little further about some of my feelings about reorganization of the police department. But in general, I've been doing this all my life. When you run a business, you have to do everything. We don't get to have a couple of different hats. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman.
Non-public and how its activities and how it would help us in Kegel Harbor, I think that's pretty much what I've been doing for the last seven years I've been on council. I think many of you know, I got an undergraduate degree from the University of Michigan, but my master's of business administration is from Michigan State, so it's like both sides of the house here. The skills I learned in the MBA that I run my business with, that helped me succeed, I've taken them and they've transferred them to everything we've done here in city hall. I look at the finances and I take the financial skills and I help our city staff and I help our employees. I look at the business skills I've picked up and I look at different departments and offer suggestions, so we can help each other. There's sound business decision-making skills. I'm going to piggyback a little bit into the SEMCOG. I've learned a lot about government finance, which, believe it or not, you know, we always say, run the city like it's a business, but it's a city and things are a little bit different than running your own private business. So you have to make some modifications along the way to make sure that you provide the right services. We're not looking for a profit. We're looking to help raise money to provide services for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Rubin.
Well, I think most of you know that I'm a fix-it person. I go into the county, I go up to the fifth floor. They say, here's Rubin. What the heck does he want for Kegel Harbor now? That's what I do. I mingle with people. I make friends. I get them involved to invest in Kegel Harbor. We are all ambassadors of Kegel Harbor. Every council member, every person on any committee in Kegel Harbor, we're ambassadors. And we work with people that can help benefit Kegel Harbor in a big way. So I've learned from the best. I've learned from Bob Datto at the county. He is their chief money man there, and it's a good thing we did, because we reacted quickly during this financial storm, and it's helped us, and the county has helped us too. So why not lean on people that can help us? As Rob said, we use their AAA bond to raise money.
Thank you. Mr. [inaudible]. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Coleman, and this will be the last question prior to the closing remarks. What do you think would be the most important mission, if elected, to the position you are seeking? I guess the one item that you feel is more important.
The most important, I mean, there's not one that's most important. There's multiple things that are important. How do you say that the police department's more important than the fire department, or the roads, fixing the roads is more important than fixing, you know, a DPW truck? I think the most important thing that we do is maintain our I think the most important thing that we do is maintain our finances and make sure we have positive cash flow, we engage residents, we engage the commercial businesses in the area, and we work together to make the city better. We work together to make sure that the cash flow is coming through, the revenue is there, that we have an attractive environment so people want to come to Kegel Harbor, and as a result of people will have the money to provide the services that people want. It's pretty much unheard of in Oakland County for a city to clear the roads of snow when a couple inches fall. If you ask your neighbors in surrounding cities if their roads are cleared every time there's a snowfall, and we're able to do that because we manage things very, very well. We manage our finances. So, I mean, there's not one answer. Really, it's a variety of important issues.
Thank you. Mr. Rubin.
Well, there are a lot of important issues. Every day, we get an important issue. If it's important to one of our residents, it's important to us. So, the phone rings 24 hours a day, we answer it, and we act. As far as the issues that are quite important, managing the assets of this community is the most important job that we have that we could do, and doing it in a partnership with the community. That's the single biggest issue that we face every single day. And more importantly, we come to meetings, and we act, we're proactive, and we get the problem before it gets us.
Thank you. Mr. Troz.
Troz, yes, here I am. I agree, there isn't one item, but if it were one item, I might weight myself most heavily towards interaction with the residential community again. It is the lifeblood of why everybody's here, why businesses come, why there's even a city. There was no city until 1955. When we look at the business of running the city that we keep hearing about, we do have some problems possibly with long-term financing. If there is a failure in the economy, we've got a big debt to pay. I run a business that has no debt. Gee, isn't that a luxury? I don't want to tell you what the sacrifice was to accomplish that. It's staggering, but it's a very secure position once you're there. You don't have to worry about paying for the trucks that you need to have to work each day. So, putting the priorities on a duty of controlling finances, that's the first thing. And by the way, when you run a business, you've got to go and generate those finances. You don't know you've got a check coming every year and say, oh, how's we going to divvy this out? Not that simple, but having to generate it and work within it, and not always having the guarantee and having income is very difficult. Thank you.
Then, as the end of the questions, we'll now have closing statements in reverse order, and we will start with Mr. Troz.
Well, I'm not a speechmaker. I'm not a politician. I'm a kind of hard-nosed businessman, been doing it for a long time. I love people. My feelings for people, I put, I love myself, I want to be treated the very best in the world, and I don't think anybody should be treated by me by less than I would treat myself. So, that's why I'm asking you to vote for me. I expect to be a voice for the people. Many other things will be secondary to that, although important, and if you give me that opportunity for taking a few minutes to vote, I will give you three years of darn diligent work. I will cooperate and get along with the council, but I will speak out and be independent where I think it's appropriate. I'm not a thorn in the bush or the rose with a thorn. I'm a great guy, if you get to know me. Come on up to the office, I'm there, readily available. I do have to run a business. I won't always be there when you're calling in, but you can call, and I'll make an appointment. Come down to my house, meet me and my wife and my dog, my son, my bird, and thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Rubin.
One of the criterias of being part of a city government is that you ought to want the job real bad and be willing to work at it. Every community needs a council member that has a vision and with no personal agendas. I'm blessed with an enormous amount of energy, and I'm also blessed with my ability to give back to the community that I like. I'm probably the luckiest person in the world to be able to serve my community and the committees that I'm on. I've met some very incredible people here in Kegel Harbor whom I probably would never have known had I not done what I did, chose to run for city office. Good things are happening in Kegel Harbor, and I have this opportunity to thank my fellow colleagues on the council for making it happen. And one person I feel fits the mold for a leadership is Rob Kalman, who is my colleague on the council. We work well together, we work amicably, professionally together, and together, we considered that the choices we made, the people loved, the people like, and thank you very much for your incredible friendship and your support, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for coming here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman.
Thank you. Thanks, Jerry, for helping us out tonight and our help from the League of Women Voters. Kegel Harbor is in better shape today than many cities across Michigan because of the work that Sid and I have put in, along with our fellow council people. There is so much that is good about this city. I'm not satisfied, though, with Kegel Harbor just being better off than the next city. I'd like Kegel Harbor to become even better, a city that people admire and talk fondly of, that we're all proud of. I have a vision for a healthy local government, a positive balance of residential and business activities, along with good recreational and cultural activities and opportunities. I make decisions that honor the past, but look forward to the future. We can become a stronger community if we work together. I'm running for reelection because I like Kegel Harbor. I'm not running because I have a grudge against someone. I'm thankful I work along a bunch of really talented people in our city council. We work well together, and good things happen when people work well together, and we cooperate. We don't work against each other. I'm asking for you to vote for me on November 4th. Reelect me, I've got experience, I have an independent voice. Read about me on Kegel Har, excuse me, kalmanforkegelharbor.com. Thank you.
Thank you. The League of Women Voters would like to thank the audience, the candidates, Linda Vahl, city clerk and her staff, and Civic Center 15 for making this form possible. For further nonpartisan information on these candidates, check the League of Women Voters website and our voter guide at LWVOA.org, also on Vote 411. When known, rebroadcast times for this form will be on the League of Women Voters website and also on the TV 15 website. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to men and women over the age of 18. Remember to vote on November 4th, 2014. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you, and good night. (applause) Cheers.[1738.33]